Good evening and welcome to the Township of Woolwich Committee, the whole meeting for September 12th, 2022. We are now live on YouTube. I'll now do a roll call of council. I, Council Merlehan, am present and will be chairing this meeting. Mayor Shance.
Present.
Council Martin.
Present.
Council McMillan.
Present.
Council Redicop.
Present.
Councilor Shance.
Present.
Okay, welcome all to the meeting tonight. We'll start with a land acknowledgement. Sorry, we're not going to start with a land acknowledgement, or are we? Okay. Sorry about that. The land on which we meet have been here from time immemorial. People have inhabited Southern Ontario for about 10,000 years and we acknowledge the neutral people also called Adam Wondron, the Anishinaabe and the Haudenosaunee, people who lived here when settlers arrived and who share this land with us. May we together learn to care for and respect each other, our flora and fauna and the land we inhabit together. I would like to invite Mayor Shance and members of council to make a statement in memorial to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. For second.
Thank you. On September the 8th, the United Kingdom, the Commonwealth and much of the world entered a period of mourning on the death of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. She was a mother, a grandmother, a great-grandmother and a queen who served with grace and an unwavering dedication. She has been a constant studying presence for all Canadians and we reflect on the love she had for her family, her country, the Commonwealth and the world. On behalf of Woolwich Township, we send our heartfelt condolences to the entire royal family who we hope will find comfort in the knowledge that Her Majesty was greatly loved. Rest in peace, Your Majesty. You have been and will always remain a great inspiration. Long live the King.
Thank you, Mayor Shance. Are there any other members of councils who wish to make a statement? Council Martin.
Thank you. There's nothing that I could say tonight that hasn't been said already the last couple of days. I have watched hours of media coverage and she was certainly loved by everybody. She was respected by everybody and truly a just amazing individual.
Thank you, Council Martin. Any other members of council wish to speak? Councilor Shance.
Thank you. I would like to respectfully use this opportunity to offer my sincere condolences to the royal family during this sad time. Queen Elizabeth II was an inspiration to all, an incredible lady who served the country right to the end. I appreciate your diplomacy in times of conflict. She will be remembered for her extraordinary reign and remarkable service. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shance. Anybody else? Okay. I have one final statement. Let us take a moment to remember Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, the longest-serving monarch in a post-colonial Commonwealth for her years of service as our head of state. We think of her family mourning their mother and grandmother and the nation that mourns her passing. As she said on her coronation, "I have in sincerity pledged myself to your service as so many of you are pledged to mine throughout all my life and with all my heart, I shall strive to be worthy of your trust." Our flags in Woolwich are flying at half mast in remembrance of her. If we could take a moment of silence to remember the Queen. Thank you. Counsel, we have a meeting conflict for September 19th. It's the day of mourning. Which is also the day scheduled for the Queen's funeral. There are a couple of options to decide to navigate this conflict. So the first option we have is to reschedule the meeting to Tuesday, October 20th at 7:00 PM. The second option is to cancel the meeting and push all scheduled items to Monday, October 3rd, special council meeting. Does anyone have a preference or any further suggestions? Mayor Shance.
My suggestion would be to just go with the October 3rd date. The agenda is fairly light and I think the agenda on October 3rd is also quite light. So I think it would be quite easy to combine that all into one.
Okay, any other members of councils with similar? Council Martin.
November 3rd is fine with me.
Okay. Thumbs up. Okay, so that's the direction. Okay, so we'll have a motion to cancel then the September 20th meeting. So that the council of the Township of Woolwich cancel the Monday, September 19th council meeting to respect the day of mourning for Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II's funeral and direct staff to reschedule all items to Monday, October 3rd, 2022, special council meeting. Somebody to move that, Council Redicop and seconded by Mayor Shance. All those in favor? And that is carried. Okay. Next item is disclosures of pecuniary interest. Mayor Shance.
Thank you. I have a pecuniary conflict of interest on the public meeting, DS 32-2022. My husband is a consultant for the applicant.
Okay, anybody else for the meeting? Okay, I also have a pecuniary interest on the same item. Tube Line and Brian Elshance are clients of mine. So I will ask Fred, Council Redicop, to chair the planning portion of the meeting at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Merlehan. Instructions for the public meeting. This meeting constitutes the formal public meeting required under Section 34 of the Planning Act and is for information purposes only. A decision of this application will be made at a future meeting of the committee of whole and/or council when staff has reviewed all submissions and prepared a report with a recommendation. All those attending will be given an opportunity to speak and those speaking are asked to provide the written outline and/or information used in their oral submission to the clerk for the public record. Please contact Developmental Services, Development Services staff at the township to receive further notifications about this application. The information report is DS 32-2022. The following portion of the meeting is for information only and no decisions will be made tonight. Any questions will be directed to Development Services. I declare the planning public meeting to be open. Manager of Planning Jeremy Vink is with us to introduce the application. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. As you were, this is Zone Change 7/2022 for the property known as Tube Line, more formally known as 1484865Ontario Limited. This is for the property located at 6455 Reedwoods Drive and 6919 Line 86, just on the edge of the Township of Woolwich. As you're going out on Line 86, the property is 7.3 hectares. It's within the countryside or the prime agricultural area as it is known in the township's official plan and is zoned agricultural with site-specific provisions. The current site-specific provisions under the zoning permit the metal fabrication of the farm-related equipment, accessory uses, associated sales and equipment repair and also puts in limitations around the time, some time of operations and the maximum floor areas of all the buildings. The property also currently contains a single-family dwelling which is located just off the Line 86 portion with some accessory structures related to that building. The purpose of this application is to amend that site-specific agricultural zoning to expand the agricultural agricultural equipment manufacturing operation on the property by removing the house and accessory dwelling to allow for the construction of a new 10, just under 10,000 square meter addition to the manufacturing portion. Specifically, they're also removing the restrictions related to the building size areas that are in the current zoning, removing the restriction with regards to the maximum area of operation to include the entire parcel versus just the majority of it and to reduce the number of required parking spaces from 280 to 140 spaces. They have submitted with this application, the concept site plan which is attached to the report, a planning justification report, a functional servicing report, a noise study, geotechnical study and archaeological study. Also attached to the report tonight is a letter that was received from one of the neighbors who is going to be speaking tonight also. If there's any questions, staff is here to answer them as necessary.
Sorry, seeing none. We'll go on to the consultants. The consultant is Brian Shance of Brian Shance Limited. He's with us on behalf of his client to provide counsel with the presentation. Mr. Shance, you may turn on your video and microphone and begin when you are ready. Welcome, Brian.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brian Shance with Brian Shance Limited and Fassad Design Studio in Waterloo. We're a company of site planners and architects and are the property owners authorized agent. Mr. Vink has covered some of mine. I'll try to go through this. His own change application 7/2022 has been submitted by the numbered company as indicated and they are located at 6455 Reedwoods Drive, west of Amira with the onsite operating business being Tube Line Manufacturing. Tube Line is an existing farm-related equipment manufacturing business that has been relocated to Woolwich for about 11 years now. This is a great opportunity for the township of Woolwich to allow additional agriculture-related manufacturing and up to 60 additional full-time jobs onsite in the township on an undersized, non-farming viable and underutilized parcel of land. The site has been a long, long established history of various farm-related businesses dating back to the 1950s. The underlying zoning for this site is agricultural. However, it has not been a viable farming operation since that time, late 50s. The application is not for a change of use as the current site-specific zoning permits the Tube Line use. It's an application to remove the restrictions related to building area, remove the restriction with regards to maximum area of operation from seven hectares to 7.3 hectares which represents the true site area. Basically, this is being a clerical housekeeping item to reflect the actual size of the property and reduce the presently calculated required parking from 280 to 140 spaces as indicated in Mr. Vink. This is currently a permitted 100% farm-related manufacturing business that primarily produces bail wrappers and manure spreaders plus several secondary products. If I could ask to have the site plan put up, please. Great, thank you. The proposed new building is at the far east end of the site. It's highlighted in red. We'll talk on our directions tonight with north being the top of the page that you're showing on the site plan. The Yeah, the new building is shown as red on the east side of the site. In addition to the long existing three main buildings also indicated in blue onsite. As part of this new building, some of the onsite storage of raw materials will be housed in the new building in addition to the manufacturing areas within. As noted on the conceptual site plan, the loading dock spaces need, needs have been located to the northerly end of the building primarily and the office section of it is facing south or to the bottom of the page as shown in front of you. The east and west walls are primarily solid clad walls. The future projected employment of about a total of 125 people's parking needs can readily be accommodated onsite as shown with the proposed approximate 140 parking spaces. We note that if in the future, any permitted business can in fact provide additional parking onsite in the area currently designated as outdoor storage, if the business model was to change. This is the outdoor storage if you can see it as the area between the red building and the lower blue bit of building. Numerous reports and studies have been completed and submitted with this application to ensure that in fact the proposal will indeed meet all agencies' requirements. The submitted planning report summarizes many of the other report assessments which are completed in greater detail in the attached individual reports. It speaks to the fact that there are currently three main buildings onsite with the primary site egress from Reedwoods Drive, employee parking, outdoor storage for raw material and finished products, an existing rented former farmhouse which will be removed as well as there's landscape areas, a stormwater management pond, a well and a septic system. Building services are spoken to in detail. Currently, there is hydro, gas and communication lines provided to the site, all of which will be provided to the new building also. There are no other municipal services provided to the site, hence water, sanitary, storm facilities, including the stormwater pond are located onsite and will be continued to do so when this project is completed. An engineered functional servicing report, geotechnical report, conceptual septic system report and hydrogeology, hydrogeological water assessment report are all submitted for review and approval by the appropriate agencies. There is no environmental sensitive areas, no provincially significant wetlands on or abutting this property and no natural heritage features. An architectural assessment has been completed and registered with the appropriate ministry. A noise feasibility study has been completed and submitted with a few items noted within it that will be submitted by the qualified engineer and monitored by township staff prior to the completion of the site plan agreement or a building permit issuance and also prior to the final occupancy to ensure compliance with requirements. Conceptual site plan has been submitted with the application of which architectural, landscaping, site lighting, snow storage, stormwater management and parking will all be further refined and detailed and will be part of the site plan agreement process with the township. Access to the site is from Reedwoods Drive frontage and will remain there. The region of Waterloo will not permit an access for this business from Highway 86 due to transportation corridor planning requirements related to sightlines in that speed zone. A minor increase in truck traffic to the site is anticipated with the future average number being 10 to 15 trucks per day. Other vehicular moments will include primarily additional future employees along with the mix of courier vehicles and some customers. The current site has some slope to the westerly direction that has been reshaped and graded to accommodate the various site uses over the many years of non-farming operation. The hours of operation as stated in the report will continue to be daytime utilization only. The GRCA regulates a small portion of the site and has responded that they have no concerns with this application. The region of Waterloo has been circulated and has today has communicated that they have no concerns with the archaeological assessment as posted and have reviewed the noise study in which a few points of clarification were made and now they have no objections to the submission. The previous approved amending bylaw 59-2011 was deemed to be in conformance with the Township of Woolwich and the region of Waterloo official plans. The current application, which is a continuation of the existing farm-related manufacturing uses is in compliance with the region of Waterloo, Township of Woolwich official plans and the provincial policy statement as spoken to in the submitted planning report. We have received and reviewed the southerly adjacent property owner's letter. A majority of their concerns will be addressed as a matter of course during the final document preparation, which is subject to the review and approval of the township and other agencies. Most of the items raised have been addressed in the current report submission detailed reports. In discussion with my client, the applicant, we do acknowledge that we do need to and will provide additional visual screening along the common or south property line as shown on the bottom property line to better separate the two existing uses. This will include enhanced tree planting in the area south of the current main building, the blue one, and provision for additional tree planting, new tree planting along the property line in the area of the new south employee parking between the existing blue main building and the new red building. This will be accomplished by shifting the new parking area there further north in order to provide more space for the new trees. This too will be monitored by township staff at site plan agreement time. It's important to note in the letter from the property owner that states, and I quote, "Within the roughly 10 years Tube Line has been our neighbors, they have been respectful in managing the noise, garbage, snow removal and other operational related matters and that this has been a considerable and appreciated improvement from the businesses that were on the subject property prior to Tube Line locating there in 2011." My client has strongly expressed to me that they have every intention of maintaining this relationship and moving forward. In summary, the proposed addition is an extension of an existing permitted agricultural farm-related manufacturing use. The expansion allows the existing growing business to expand, creating additional full-time employment opportunities. There is no loss of viable agricultural land, no loss of employment land, but in fact an increase in manufacturing capacity on this underutilized site. No new municipal services are required. We trust that all these elements will be given appropriate consideration moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shance. Any questions for Mr. Shance, the consultant? Council Martin, go ahead. Thank you. Probably a question for Mr. Shance. Exactly where does his neighbor live that has some concerns? He's not east of the new building. Is he across the highway or is he in that front little corner?
He's in the lands that are due south. It's not shown on our site plan. It's on they have, they have but our south property line abuts his north property line. It's in that. If you know the areas, I think you do. It's approximately an eight acre area with one residence on it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Shance? Seeing none. Thank you, Brian. Now we have one participant. David Chokol is with us this evening to speak. Mr. Chokol, you may turn your video and microphone on and begin when you are ready.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is David Chokol. Don't worry about pronunciation. It's difficult. It's fine. Don't worry about it. Just to give a better illustration of the properties, if I may share my screen. Hopefully, we can all see. This is now what Tube Line is, if everybody can see, the large manufacturing complex here in the center. And this property here is my property as well as my mother's property. This is an older picture. We can take a look at some newer telemetry. It's terrible. That's a winter one, but this is how Tube Line looks in more modern day. Here, we'll stop sharing for now. We did receive the letter of application for the zone change and we did have some concerns. As I did state, we have been alongside Tube Line for 10 years and as an industrial commercial neighbor, they have been respectful. We don't have any conflict with them. However, we haven't always had that relationship with the businesses that have been beside us in the past. There have been numerous issues with the previous owners and the thing is the nature of the property is still the same. It is an agricultural industrial use. So when we see the operation go from what it is now to essentially doubling, if not tripling in size, we're worried about the impact that's going to have on our property as well as the land. So some of the things I wanted to kind of bring up, we've been living there for 30 years now. We were an organic farming business when that was still viable. That was run by my father and my mother. Since my father's passed and my mother is getting older, so we don't do as much farming as we used to. We do still lease out the land to the local farmers so that they can get useful crops off of it and at least provide something back to the community. The concerns we mainly have with the amount of, I would say, expansion next door would be basically the parking structure or not necessarily the structure, but the parking arrangement. If we could bring up the previous document that showed the parking along the south side or the south boundary that abuts ours. As you can see, the number of parking that increases along the south edge there. There were, in the past, there have been plenty of issues. I can actually show aerial photography where the previous business, not Tube Line, but the previous business, they pushed snow from the parking lot onto our field just for snow removal and this actually caused damage and caused crops to fail. We'd also have to go by and pick up the cigarette butts and the trash out of our field and it was just basically an unpleasant experience all around. I don't think Tube Line would do something of that nature, but we do worry just with the proximity that that is an inevitability. I don't think it would be anything like what the previous business did, but it is something we worry about. So we wonder if it is possible to change up the parking arrangement perhaps create some distance or some buffer so it wouldn't be so close to the land. Further questions we have that didn't seem to be addressed in the report is also if you take a look at the southeast corner, which is the bottom left, I believe that's where the proposed snow storage would be in the winter. There is a culvert that goes underneath there. We worry that if that culvert plugs, that will flood us. We're in a low-lying area and basically the highway acts as a high point and the water floods on this picture here, if you can see it. The water floods from the south end and moves towards the north and our property basically all drains towards the culvert and then moves on. We worry that if the snow storage were to plug or degrade that culvert, that could potentially have catastrophic issues on our side. Another concern we had was basically when the factory first, I won't say the factory first, before Tube Line, that property used to be owned by Metzger's Eggs Grating. That was, I think, that was back in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s. It was a smaller operation. I can actually kind of show some screenshots here. Okay, back in the day how it used to look and how it's starting to look now. Here. Okay. There is. It's actually showing. Do you see a screenshot or do you see a white desktop? It didn't really give me an option to pick. Whether it was showing a picture.
Or five very small shots.
Very small shots. Okay, let's see if we can change that. Okay, let's see if we can change that. There. Is that better?
Yep, yep.
So this was the, how the factory kind of looked before Tube Line. You can see it's kind of a, they just have outdoor storage and they just leave lumber just out in the parking lot. And you can kind of see the factory here in the background. This was before Tube Line. When Tube Line moved in, they did do a little bit of expansion and they did offer to provide some screening with some trees as they were expanding their business. And we thought, you know, this is a good step forward. Certainly better than the previous customer and we can go forward from there. So as you can see, they did do a little bit of expansion. If you take a look at from the old to the new, the factory is now taller than it was. And there are some small trees that you see planted along the property line. This is an improvement, obviously. It doesn't just have lumber just out floating around and constantly having trucks moving around and shunting things left and right all day. So it's definitely an improvement. And this is how it looks in modern day times. As you can see, the trees have grown a tiny little bit. I think the, the pictures are three, four years apart. The trees are, they're definitely appreciated. But the, the size of this factory that's supposed to be putting in is, is quite large. So just planting a few saplings and waiting ten, twenty, thirty years for them to grow before they provide any effective screening is something that we'd like to to see if we can work together to do something about that to kind of screen us off. If you can see further here, this is the view from my back deck, which looks directly into the, basically our backyard right from Tube Line. This shot that I'm showing here is basically more or less where the building that they're proposing, the new building would be put in and all the parking would be put in right along here. All right. So let's see if we can expand that. It's not doing weird stuff on me. Anyways, as you can see, this is basically looking directly into our backyard. So we're hoping that we can get some sort of screening in place between us and Tube Line. We've, as time has gone on, here you can see we tried to plant a whole bunch of trees to screen the factory. It originally did more or less screen the factory when it was half the size that it is now. But it's grown considerably and adding in that that basically that new building would plunk it right there. And every employee coming in and out of the factory would just basically be staring right back at us all day long as they come through. The other thing is we are a little bit concerned about the ecological effects of the factory. Like I said, Tube Line has not really been, well, I won't say really, but they haven't been an issue, but the previous owner, if you can see here, the way they managed their snow removal. You could actually see the crop damage that their snow removal did and how they parked. And the amount of damage it did to our crops and usable land. We do have plans in the future to do niche crops, perhaps an orchard or some other farming in there. And we would like to see our lands not be adversely affected by any business next door. The other thing we have concern of is that you are, well, the application does have a lot of expansions. That's going to be using up a lot more water. And that water obviously is going to have to go somewhere. I understand there's a storm management pond on site. But the, the septic system used there, I would better like to understand which way the water would flow. Is there any chance that it could contaminate the farmland, could contaminate irrigation of the lands and damage use of the prime agricultural lands here? I believe that is really all the concerns I have with the current application. The, the only thing really on my side is that I want to make sure that this, this application doesn't adversely affect the, our lands. We do have respect for Tube Line. As I said, a neighbor, they have been a good neighbor, but the current plans do cause concern. I have to think forward. Tube Line's here today and for now, but nothing is guaranteed. They could move on, they could get bought out and the next owner or next business that moves in isn't necessarily going to be like them. And I kind of, we would like to see this plan set out in such a way that even if the relationship changed, we are still kind of mutually excluded from each other and do not adversely affect each other.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Is there time for questions to the participant, the neighbor? Any questions for him? Counsel, Counselor Schontz?
Yes, thank you through you to David, if you could come back on the screen. You, thank you. You named a number of things and of concern. And I think I heard it correctly. Does the, does the water flow from south to north on that diagram?
I would say it, the flood, so if you have the spring melt, the water flows from, I would say, south to north, the slope of the property is such that my property is higher than Tube Line. But you have a melt and the parking lot that is there at Tube Line that will, you could see from the pictures that I had previously, you can clearly see how the melt basically put. Well, you could see the crop failure, but you can't see the garbage. I didn't take pictures of the garbage, but if, if cigarette butts and plastic garbage bags and gravel, they still travel north, right, with the melt. So as the pile melts, the, just because the general slope of the property is south to north, it doesn't mean that there isn't some localized flooding that happens counter to that. And then from, then from, that's just on the surface. How does the water flow beneath the surface, right? That's another story because we also use that well as our main source of drinking water and irrigation. So we have a well on our property as well.
Okay. But you were saying, I think you said that it hasn't been a problem since Tube Line's been there. It was a previous owner?
The, the previous owner was definitely a more difficult customer. Tube Line hasn't been, I would say, they've been much more respectful. But again, they're tripling their operations there. So while the previous owner, if they were the same size, I wouldn't be too much worried about the impact. But this is basically tripling the operation. So I'm assuming there's a huge increase in water and a huge increase in septic as well.
Okay, if I could just continue with a couple of questions. Thank you. In the thirty years that you've been there, has that culvert ever plugged up that you're aware of?
The culvert at the Tube Line property?
Yeah, the one you're talking about in the.
Yes.
That you were concerned about.
Yes, yes. Snow and ice have clogged it up. I've actually gone there personally and had to auger it or chunk it out because my lands were flooding.
Okay. And then the final question I have is, I think you had a, a picture there that was from your deck across the way to the new, where the new building is going to be located. Where that, where that equipment is, is that where the new building is? You own that field in between?
Correct.
Okay, I think that's all the questions I have. I might have some for Mr. Vink afterwards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any more questions? Thank you very much, David, for participating in this discussion. I will now ask the clerk if there are any unregistered participants in the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I do wonder if we should ask counsel if there's any additional questions for staff.
Okay. Is there any additional questions for Mr. Vink who had a, had a report earlier on this issue? Counselor Schontz, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. If I could through you to Mr. Vink. The question about the culvert, is that in the ditch? That would be a township property, would it not? And are you aware of any issues there?
Yes, to Mr. Chair, to Counselor Schontz, I'm not aware of any issues. Doesn't mean there hasn't been any, but that should be a township ditch. And just as a general note, our current site plans now would reflect that we don't want any snow stored within a swale or drainage area. So we don't get that freeze thaw problem and that blocks any culverts or any swale ditches areas to cause any of those problems. So our current agreements actually would kind of prevent, would hopefully prevent that from happening and require them to pilot elsewhere. So it just kind of flows towards it generally without blocking it.
And then another question on that same topic. Do you know, is the parking lot going to be paved or is it going to be just gravel?
Off the top of my head, I can't recall which it is, but either way, we speak to it in the agreement. So we could, you know, they'll be speaking the drainage and how it'll be plowed and cleaned and maintained for snow storage. So a bit of extra, you know, that space in between, we might be looking at obviously some grass strips in there where the grass snow might be piled before it gets to their property. And I can see working with them to address some issues, maybe some fencing to help add some additional screening, which should prevent snow being pushed further over.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing is the grading will probably grade in such a manner that it'll keep it away from the neighbor's property. I would assume that'll be taken care of.
Definitely, that would be the requirement, definitely.
And one final question, what percentage of this is the, the percentage of the property like that this operation is taking up on the whole property?
So right now is probably about seventy-five to eighty percent of the property between the buildings and the outdoor storage is taking place today. So basically, we're losing the house and the outbuildings around it and a bit of space around that area, which will be removed to me at, will give space for this new building to take place. And then some additional parking in this play. So we'll go to a hundred percent use of the property, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Vink? Not seeing any. I'll ask the clerk again if there's any unregistered participants in the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are no unregistered participants tonight.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I declare the public planning, public meeting to be closed. Sorry about that. Okay, so presentations, we're going to have delegations. Just read some instructions here for, for everybody. Please leave your video and microphone off until you are called to speak. Each speaker has a maximum of seven minutes unless counsel or the clerk has set a different time. There will be a timer on the screen and you will hear a warning when you have one minute and when your time is up. Once you're finished, please turn your microphone and camera off again. You may listen to the rest of the meeting or leave when you want. Counsel will hear from all speakers and ask questions of clarification. Counsel discussion and debate will start when all speakers on a topic have finished. So I'd like to invite delegates Deborah Cowell and Nicole Gauthier from the management. They're going to do a presentation on the management of trees, stormwater ponds, trails and invasive species. So we'll just wait for them to magically appear. There they are.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, hi there. Welcome to our committee of the whole meeting. And you may start your presentation at any time. You have seven minutes. Thank you.
Well, we have a PowerPoint presentation to put on and we would like to start with a few questions that we would like to ask the council. So to begin with, okay. Are we coming up on the screen? With our PowerPoint?
Yes, your PowerPoint is there. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So these are the questions that we have for the council and I'll just read them quickly. So the first one is what further plans will be made to the maintenance of the drainage ponds in Omira? We have noticed that they have cut down a lot of the trees and things around the drainage ponds and a lot of the native plants. Also, what are the reasons for cutting down native shrubs and trees along the paths joining the drainage pond? So there's a path that goes along the drainage ponds and they have removed all of the lower branches off the trees and also have removed trees and shrubs that were around there. And so the, this allows the fragments to spread more because there's a lot of them in there already. And you know, when you take down the understory, it'll just, they just are becoming more and more invasive. So what are the plans for removal of invasive fragments? Fragments are clogging the drainage ponds and they also pose a fire risk when dry. You'll see a lot of these, especially on the Kissing Bridge Trail. There's a lot of fragments growing there. And one of the main concerns that I see is that they are going to go into the stream, the creek below. If you look down, you can see the creek going down and also leads into the Grand River, which is under a lot of pressure right now from environmental things. And when you cut off the water supply, it's going to increase the temperature of the river and also add more algae growth. So you're going to get algae blooms going into it. So the next question is, does the maintenance staff of Woolwich have training provided by an arborist? And do they have knowledge regarding environmental issues? And how will the township address the issues of costs incurred by contracted companies to the cost of trees having to be replaced due to damage caused by lawn tractors and weed whackers? Now, I have been informed that they have been talked to about the weed whackers and that has stopped. But what I've noticed, if I'll go to the, no, that's not it, the next one. This is the damage from the, the tractors that I've noticed. The, this was not done by weed backers. This was actually done by tractors and this was August the fourteenth. So it was after the talk with the contractors for the weed backers. So anyway, I'm going to go back to the response from the township regarding further maintenance to the drainage ponds. So what we were told is the work is not indiscriminate as there is a plan in place and involves removal of tall brush and grass in order for staff to safely access the pond to complete selective tree removal and overgrowth with the goal of reverting the pond back to the original planting plan that was designated and constructed or designed and constructed. We appreciate that due to the amount of overgrowth, the work appears dramatic. However, it is necessary and something that Woolwich will be doing more of in the coming years. The facility is a constructed stormwater management pond that requires regularly scheduled maintenance, as do all of our facilities. The original planting plan that is being implemented supports its intended use and promotes environmental benefits. I don't really see the environmental benefits of clear cutting everything down around it. Staff are working towards ensuring that all of the township's SWM facilities are better maintained moving forward. So does that mean that all of the drainage ponds are going to be clear cut down? That is one of the questions because they're going to have to do a lot of clear cutting to me. And we were told that this was going to just grow back anyway. So what, what is the sense of cutting down sumex that are just going to grow back anyways? To me, that seems like a waste of time and effort and, and money. So the next picture that I have is some of the pictures of the trees that were cut down. These were mature cedar trees. And they weren't near the stormwater, the, the drainage pond and all, they were up on the berm on the top. I have no idea why they took those down. The next picture is a picture of the invasive phragmites. If you're not familiar with phragmites, they are a reed from Australia and they grow very, very tall. The roots are invasive and they also put out a toxin which kills everything around them so that nothing else can grow. And as I mentioned before, these are all growing in the ponds on the trail going towards
Giggle again, I don't know how to pronounce it.
The creek, down by the creek that goes down to the lion's trail. And, and I'm concerned about this. Okay, we got one minute left. So the impacts of invasive phragmites crowds out native vegetation. That's resulting in decreased biodiversity. Generally provides poor habitat and, and food supplies for wildlife, including several species of risk of which there is in those ponds, there's some turtles and different things in there that are actually endangered. Grows very quickly thereby causing lower water levels as water transpire faster than it would do with native vegetation. Increases fire hazards as stands are composed of a high percentage of dead stalks. Can affect agriculture, cause road safety hazard and impact recreational activities such as swimming, boating and angling. This was put out by Ontario's Invaded Species Awareness Program. And the last thing that I had on the, on our presentation is what I would like to see Woolwich with. And I know trees for Woolwich has been planting a lot of I've been a part of, but this is what we need right now. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Deborah and Nicole, I don't know if I missed it, but would, oh, could you stay on camera for us for a bit? I was just wondering, are you like delegating as concerned neighbors to the, to the, what happened to the store management pond? I'm just, I'm just wondering what your background is for.
We're concerned citizens of Woolwich and also environmental students.
Okay, thank you. If you, if you don't mind staying there. Does any council member have any questions? Because we could ask staff to answer some of those questions that they, they had. We have both Thomas and Jared available to, to speak. Mayor Shonts?
I have some questions for staff, but not the delegation.
Okay, Councillor Shonts?
Thank you, through you to the delegation. You talked about the phragmites and how they're invasive. What, what would your suggestion be to get rid of them or what, what would you suggest we do with them?
Are you talking to us?
Oh, yes. Well, there's, you can look at different cities like Wolf has taken a very active stance towards phragmites in their area. I know that a lot of the roundup has not been used as much, but that's one of the ways that can be controlled. They can also be controlled by cutting them down twice a year, once in the spring, once in the fall and then disposing of the seed heads by putting them in, in garbage bags. You have to be very careful with the seed pods and what, what I've been noticing right now is I see a lot of kids playing with those, taking them along and flinging them all around like wands and people cutting them down for fall ornaments. And you know, this is, this is not a good thing. There's no awareness. People aren't aware of, of really how horrible this is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions for the delegates from council? No, not seen any. Okay, thanks. You can still stay there. We're, we're going to ask maybe Jared and Thomas to join the meeting. Okay, now maybe before we go to Mayor Shonts's questions, have you had an opportunity to look at these questions that they posed right at the beginning of? Oh, I'm trying to find them here now. We're up. Yes, about the storm management pond. So what further plans will be made to maintain all the drainage ponds in Almira? What are the reasons for cutting down native shrubs and trees along the paths adjoining the drainage ponds? What are the plans for removal of invasive phragmites? Does the maintenance staff of Woolwich have training provided by an arborist? Or do they have knowledge regarding environmental issues? And how will the township address the issue of costs incurred? Are those, are those some questions that we could have answers for tonight, either Thomas or Jared?
Yeah, I think we can provide some answers, Chair Merlehan. I think from a high level perspective, right now we need to understand that stormwater management ponds serve two purposes. There's a quantity control component, which would be to protect downstream residents from flooding. There is a quality control component as well, which speaks to the environmental aspects of a stormwater management pond. And this is an evolutionary process. Ponds have been around since the seventies. The Ministry of Transport, or the, sorry, the Ministry of the Environment has come up with guidelines that municipalities and consulting engineers typically follow when doing development projects. And so what we have here in Woolwich unfortunately is we have a series of these ponds that have been built and constructed in the seventies and, and, and more recently. But we haven't done a great job of, of maintenance of, of these ponds. So what's, what's happened, a lot of municipalities have taken this naturalized approach. Quite frankly, it's a bit of a cost-saving measure and then you're introducing overgrowth, which really chokes down the function of the pond. If we're looking at, at some of these ponds as quantity control devices, well, by choking down the pond with just overgrowth, it's allowed to occur. You're really, you're not, you're not realizing that, that, that the, the intended purpose of the pond for flood measures. You're also not, you're not promoting the environmental features of the pond as well. So we took a stab this year, this was our first foray into pond maintenance. And you will see more of this. The ministry is mandating this through our asset management planning. These are assets to the township and we do need to manage them. So we looked at this pond on Brookmead and Second. It was, you couldn't see the outlet structure, you couldn't get access to the pond. So we were able to review the original planting plan. And, and we did have an arborist and consultant arborist to, to determine what trees were original versus what was more, more or less overgrowth. And that was a simple process for us then just to have staff look to fin that out and, and so that we could gain access and look to see what the sedimentation in the pond was. And we found there's certainly sediment in the pond that needs to be dredged and we need to clean those out on a frequent basis. A lot of ponds now that we're seeing have a, a bit of a fifteen to twenty year dredging term to them. So a lot of ponds have forbays which collect the sedimentation. And, and, and that's a, a, a good way to, to not encourage sediment going downstream, which is an environmental feature. In the, in this instance, we don't have a forbay, it's just simply a pond. And it, it would have been designed that way when it was done. So we do, we do a better job of design. But I want counsel to be aware that, that this really was just re-establishing the original plan. We acknowledge and appreciate that we should be engaging going forward, some environmental consulting services to promote such things as salt uptick plants. I mean, there's lots of, of things to mitigate on, on chloride impacts as we are groundwater dependent in the region of Waterloo. So there are a number of plantings that we can explore now that really haven't been previously explored in, 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 in in the township. And we know that some municipalities certainly are, are more advanced on that. Appreciate too, it's a resourcing issue. We only have so many staff and, and so many resources. So we felt this was a good approach. I, I drove by there today as a matter of fact, I was quite happy to see that there was grasses growing again. I saw cattails there. I did not see phragmites in this particular pond, but we acknowledge phragmites exist in the township. The township did have a phragmites program. I'm not sure that it's current right now, but phragmites as, as the delegates indicated is difficult. You cannot use Roundup or any chemical spray when in water. So the only solution there is, is what they had said, which is obviously time consuming and timing is of the essence as well as to, to cut twice a year and to bag and so forth. So it is a difficult vegetation to, to eliminate. But something that obviously we can look to explore with council and it will, it will take staff resources and obviously funding resources to be able to appropriately tackle the problem. But again, I want to, I want to reiterate, this was our first foray into stormwater management maintenance and it is long overdue. We know that development is slated on the west side of Barnswallow when we were looking to try to improve the drainage in the existing built-up area that ultimately will be receiving waters for this development that will be be occurring shortly. And so that was sort of a, a, a quick overview, I guess you would say, that we, we, we appreciate that we don't have all the resources, we don't have all of the expertise, but in this instance, certainly at the, at the pond, I think staff did a good job with the, what we had available. And, and certainly we will look to improve our approach going forward and, and appreciate the delegate coming forward and sharing their concerns and we would, we would agree with their concerns as well.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Shonts, you had some questions for, for staff?
Thank you. Jared basically answered them, but I, I do want to say thank you for for getting some, some other advice on what plantings should be used and, and not just using the plantings that were suggested thirty years ago and sort of looking at the new science, what we have to look at. But I do wonder, could you, could you explain? Because I know a lot of people are really concerned about this and you, you, you are too. What, what will this look like going forward? So you said you'll, you'll do some things different in subsequent maintenance. So, so for in stormwater management pond that has vegetation growing around it, when you're doing regular maintenance, will that change? Will it look different over time or will it have sort of a consistent amount and type of vegetation all the time with regular maintenance?
Through Chairman Merlehan to Mayor Shonts, I think, I think stormwater management is, is a challenging thing and it is dependent on a number of pieces. Receiving waters play into the requirements of a pond. Quality and quantity, some ponds are only quality control devices, some share both. We obviously are dealing with snapshots in time as well. And, and legislation has changed likely since this pond was installed for sure. So I think when we look at a situation where we are, have a pond of, of this vintage, what we would do is I think what we've done here, and I think the enhancements that we could look to do is are there improvements to, to drainage in this particular pond? Obviously removing the sedimentation is an important piece, so that would involve dredging. And I guess the challenging piece that I'm not sure how municipalities quite frankly deal with it, whenever you have a, 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 a large body of water, the standing water, naturally you're going to have different species grow up, you're going to have turtles, you're going to have fish for all, you know. I, I mean, there's lots of things that come into the pond, but the intent of the pond is piece of infrastructure that was there to serve a purpose for flood control as well as environmental features and appreciate that that will renew and rejuvenate as well. So I don't know what to say as far as, 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 as you know, with respect to turtles or so forth. But certainly I would say that we, we do need to do a better job and ensure that ponds don't become overgrown as this pond had done and a number of our other ponds have done. I don't think that is the, the appropriate response. But I do think that there would be the programs in place where we could look to improve plantings and, and do, the, the province is already legislating doing monitoring, temperature control, sedimentation monitoring, all those things are important as well. As the delegates raised too, temperature is an important piece of this. So there are other things that we can do and potentially downstream. Maybe there is opportunity for enhancements through new developments further downstream and upstream to help mitigate or to do over control to try to improve some of the, the pieces that we're stuck with in these retrofit ponds.
I guess if, if I could suggest that to the extent possible as a maintenance program that we keep the, because, because yes, it's a piece of infrastructure for flood control, that, that is true, but it also becomes an environment. And so to the extent that we can keep that environment consistent with our maintenance so that it, you know, so that we don't have to sort of take it all apart and start over again. If you understand what I'm saying, I, I think that would be a good way and you know, perhaps that's, that'll be part of our discussion in budget time. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Does any other member of council have questions for staff at this time? No? Okay, I will now ask the clerk if there are any unregistered delegations in the meeting.
Are there no additional unregistered delegates tonight?
Okay, since there are no further delegations and council is not taking any action, we will move on to the next agenda. Thank you for your delegation tonight. Okay, next unfinished business, we do not have any and we do have some consent items. Items for approval, correspondence. We are going to pull the Research Institute for Aging Letter, Woolwich Community Conversation Guide. There was a request in that one, but does anybody want any of the other ones pulled to talk about? Hey, not seeing that. Does anybody want to move the, the two that are there? Okay, Councillor Shonts and Councillor McMillan, all of those in favor? And that's carried. The Research Institute for Aging Letter. There was a request for helping with printing and I'm going to, I'm going to just direct Clerk Smith to talk about this request first and before council weighs in.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I can suggest that, you know, we could put this information on our website. I looked through it, it was quite, quite informative. And had some great information there on aging, aging in the community. We typically wouldn't do printing for other organizations, but again, happy to put it on our website unless council wants to, to dedicate some additional funding for this.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of council want to speak to this at all or make a motion to put this conversation guide as part of the website? Mayor Shonts?
I think putting it on the website is is a good idea. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that, that we want to get into a program of, of providing printing for guides. I think that could be a slippery slope, but certainly support that the, the, the great work that they do and yeah, I would put it on the website.
Okay, anybody want, we'll take that as a motion and anybody want to second that? Councillor Redicop, anybody else want to speak to the motion? Nope. Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor? And that is carried. There's some items for information and public notices. Now we have staff reports. Our first report is a memo phased hybrid council meeting plan and I will give that to Clerk Jeff Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is really an update to the memo we brought you early April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. I had set out sort of a three-phase plan where we would, you know, be bringing council more fully back into the chambers. And you know, now that we look back on it, I think we're in that summer to winter fall period. Maybe not too far away from where we are looking, but you know, with, with the indicators that we've had, you know, I'm thinking at this point that we sort of stay status quo, especially until after the, the new election or it's the election. I would say though that we are hoping and if, if council is comfortable and the conditions are favorable that we would begin to move more into phase two and then phase three. By one, hosting the inaugural meeting and two, the closed orientation meetings of the new council in person. I think there's some benefit to that. And then we can continue looking on if, if things are looking good, we'll start allowing additional people and then eventually members of the, of the public back into chambers. Just in general, I think things have been going pretty well. We've been looking at our technology so that we can, at some point we can have council, you know, not using We've been looking at our technology so that we can, at some point, we can have council, you know, not using their own individual cameras. Hopefully a little easier for everyone. But then, of course, as I've said before, still continue live streaming in meetings for the for the future. And then also allowing members of the public and, you know, members of staff and and things like that to join. Remotely via via Zoom, I think that's been been very helpful. So that's the plan as we have it now. If if council has any comments, questions, any feedback, I'd be happy to take it.
Okay, council, any comments or feedback for Clerk Smith, Counselor Shants?
Yes, thank you through you to Clerk Smith. I do like the idea of continuing on with the live streaming and the zooming. I I neglect to come in to council chambers because. I find it easier to work off of my larger computer than than my iPad and then where my notes are, it doesn't work. So I I think if we can get back into council chambers and not need to be on Zoom. And I think that would be a positive. One one request I would have. And I sent an email today about adding the agenda to the description on the. On the Zoom link or in in the YouTube link, I should say. That way, if somebody wants to look back. And try and find something that happened in a meeting, they can look in the description and they don't have to look through the whole. The whole YouTube to try and find and and see where it is, so. I don't know if that's a possibility or not, I think would be very helpful if it if it could be done. Is then you don't have to go through every YouTube to see what that what you're looking for.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments about? This report? Okay, there's no recommendation there, just looking for feedback, so. Okay. I guess it's. We'll continue on. So our next staff report is electronic monitoring policy and I'll ask. Our Human Resources Generalist Shelley Noble to. Speak to this report, thank, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. As per the report and draft policy before you, recent amendments to Employment Standards Act now requires. Ontario employers with more than twenty five with twenty five or more employees to have a written policy on electronic monitoring. The policy must state whether or not the employer electronically monitors employees, and if the employee does. The policy must include a description of how and in what circumstances the employer may electronically monitor employees. The purpose for which the information obtained through electronic monitoring may be used by the employer. And the date the policy was prepared and the date any changes were made to the policy. Although electronic monitoring is not defined in the essay. The ministry has noted that it includes all forms of employee monitoring that is done electronically. This may include GPS systems to track employee movement, email monitoring software, internet and activity monitoring, et cetera. Upon policy approval, policy implementation would include electronic mon- monitoring policy education to all employees no later than October eleventh. In addition, staff will pro- provide employee refresher training on both the use of our information technology and our bring your own devices policies. And as per legislation, this policy will be reviewed, revised and implemented by March first each year. And with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions we have.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions for Ms. Noble about this policy? Mayor Shants?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, is there anything in here that is different than what we've been doing in the past? Or is this just basically outlining what we've always done?
Through you. Sorry, through you, Chair Merlehan to Mayor Shants. Yes, it's just outlining what we currently do.
Thank you.
Okay, any more comments, questions, feedback, or anybody want to move the recommendation? Mayor Shants and seconded by Counselor Shants. Any other comments? No, okay, call the question, all those in favor? And that is carried.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Our next item is a procedural bylaw amendment. We're going to ask our council and committee facilitator Alex Smith to. Talk to this report. Welcome, Alex.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Before you this evening are proposed minor amendments to the procedural bylaw. These minor amendments include changing the placement of the land acknowledgement on the council agenda. Implementing a new information package on the Committee of the Whole Agenda and expanding the notice of motion section. In an effort to create more efficient meetings, staff are proposing a new information package to be circulated during break weeks. This package will include items that are typically found on the consent agenda under correspondence and items for information. Council members may pull items from this package to be placed on a committee of the whole agenda. Prior to the meeting by notifying the clerk by the deadline. This process will allow for a better preparation for council members and therefore better discussion and debate during meetings. Staff are also proposing through this amendment to add a process for notice of motions. This will provide clarity for members of council as well as staff. On how and when to add a notice of motion to an agenda, as well as how and when debate and discussions can occur. When a notice of motion, sorry, with a notice of motion. It is important to note that the notice of motion process is not changing. Rather, staff are only adding wording to the bylaw to provide clarity, consistency and guidance in the future. And with that, if council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? Counselor McMillan?
Thank you, Chairman Merlin, through you to staff. I I really like the idea of pulling stuff from the consent agenda before the agenda is. Published, I think that gives council a chance to to be ready, be prepared, I think it gives staff a chance to to understand that there could be some. Questions from council and to be better prepared, and I think it's it's a great idea to just have better meetings. My question would be, would it still be appropriate in the meeting to pull something from the consent agenda? Because sometimes we might hear from constituents, maybe the the day before or two days before a meeting. Who might ask us about something that could be on the consent agenda where we would still want to pull it. And and maybe in that case, we're pulling it and referring it to the next agenda or it's something that could still be discussed, but I think. We should still understand that there might be some times where. We, for whatever reason, still want to discuss things that are on the the consent agenda even in the. Even when we get to the meeting.
Through you, Chair Merlehan to Council McMillan. So that actually ties in very well with the rest of the report. What I would suggest would be that if something would come up. During the meeting, if it would be time sensitive, that that could be placed under notice of motion. And then you could. Oh, what's the word? I need Jeff's help on this word. If Clerk Smith could help me, I'm I'm. You would. Pass a motion to. Forego the procedure, the procedural bylaw, to be able to discuss it at that meeting.
Okay. Is that good, Counsel McMillan?
That's excellent, thank you.
Perfect, okay. Does anybody else have any comments for Counselor Shants?
Thank you through you to Alex. I'll try to make this one easier. I'm a little confused when we talk about council. Getting emails on a Thursday and then we're talking about the meeting of that week and should that not be? The next week that and then then we also talk about ten AM on a Tuesday. Before we get back, are we going back to Tuesday meetings then again or? I I guess that just confused me.
Thank you, Counselor Shants, through you, Chair Merlehan. So those are internal deadlines that we have. So when we are creating an agenda for a meeting on a Monday, we are our internal deadline to receive. Materials from staff, whether that's a report or delegations, is ten AM on the Tuesday before the meeting. So that's where the ten AM deadline comes from. The Thursday, that would be, so I send an internal document to council. Giving a preview of what's to come in the next rotation, so that is the deadline that we are aiming to distribute the. Information package with as well, so that comes, I typically distribute that on the Thursday after a council meeting. And that would allow for adequate time for. Council to review that package before. The following Tuesday, when it's my internal deadline to create the agenda and have that produced by the Wednesday before. The Monday meeting.
Okay, I just, I was trying to get my head around that and I couldn't figure out how that works, so I appreciate the the clarification, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anybody, we have a recommendation in front of us here that the council, the township of Woolwich considering reports, C fifteen, twenty twenty two. Respecting procedural bylaw amendments, adopt the bylaw amendments as attached to this report. Does anybody want to move that recommendation? Counselor McMillan and Counselor Redicop will second that and all those in favor? Okay, that's carried. Okay, our final staff report for the evening. Is IS twenty three, twenty twenty two, Bridge Culver Program. Selection of engineering consultant, we'll ask our Director of Infrastructure Services, Jared Poupé, to introduce this report.
Thank you, Chairman Merlehan, and to the rest of council. Staff are seeking council's endorsement to award the contract for engineering services for this year's Bridge and Culver Program. The cost is two hundred ninety nine thousand and two hundred ninety one dollars forty two cents. We're also seeking council's endorsement to authorize pre-budget approval, excuse me. Just north of forty eight thousand dollars, and this was just a shortfall between twenty twenty two's budget numbers and what we had allocated. So we're asking council for that approval so that we can complete the entire program. And we're also seeking authorization for staff to negotiate with any landowners for the purposes of road widening. That typically happens when we look at culverts that are narrow. I don't have. Any examples, but it is just something that we are seeking council's authorization for in case we come across that through the program. I think it's important to note too is that this program is looking to eliminate two load limited structures. We currently have eight and that would reduce, including greenhouse road that council would have remembered recently with the AA. That would reduce those to five, so that's a that's an excellent statistic regarding bridges and culverts. That we would only have five out of the sixty odd significant culverts and bridges would have load limits and and we can appreciate some of those are Classical Street. The low level bridge in St. Jacob, so some that you're probably not going to get rid of load limits for quite some time, so I think that's a testament to. To council and to staff completing, doing good work on on bridges and culverts. The the RFP was responded to by six consultants, I think that is that is good news. That is very active this year with engineering services and it was competitive process, so. We we again are looking to to award to GM Blue Plan. As they were the considered to be the the best overall consultant for the work. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions for Mr. Poupé? No, does anybody want to move the recommendation? Counselor Martin and Counselor Shants will second that. I guess I'll just. Call the question, all those in favor? Okay, that is carried, thank you. Under other business, we have council reports and updates. Did anybody have anything to share this evening? Not seen, oh, Counsel Shants?
Thank you, not really anything to share, but I wonder if Mr. Poupé could come back on screen. I chatted with him today. And wondering if he can give us an update on the Glasgow Street Bridge and what's what's happening there and when possibly might be able to see it open again?
Yeah, through Chairman Merlehan to to Counselor Shants. As councils aware, we had an unfortunate incident shortly after opening the bridge after over a year. Of closure, it was, what we can deduce was that it was a farm vehicle unfortunately that went was going the right direction. But was certainly overloaded and and oversized. Did quite the damage to the height restrictor so much so that it pulled the footing out of the ground, so that was an impressive. Hit, unfortunately, we do not have any information on who. So the other unfortunate piece was there was some concern regarding the bridge. There was some loosening of the diagonal bracing that was installed, so we have had an engineer now review that. We are going to have staff under the care of an engineer tighten those turnbuckles up. And and we'd expect to be open that once we are able to reinstall a new height restrictor. We've already gauged a a metal fabricating outfit to to construct that for us, so that's really what we're waiting on now. We can't open it until we get a height restrictor. And we have been in conversation with Water League Services to see if there's anything that we can do to maybe help. In the future to maybe recover some of the costs. I don't have a number yet on what that cost is, but I can certainly report back to council once we know for sure. And we are hopeful maybe in the next couple of weeks to be able to have that up and installed, but. Can certainly provide an update to council once I know more later in the end of this week.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted the public to hear that as well because I'm sure some people are wondering what's going on there, thanks.
Okay, Mayor Shants?
Thank you. I I wonder if during the budget process, we can talk about if there is monitoring that we should be doing on some of our. Our bridges, I'm I'm sure. Incidents like that are costly and it it may, there may be a cost benefit to it, but. Something to to look at in the budget process.
Yes, absolutely, through you, Chairman Merlehan, we can certainly. Look at that, there's the option of cameras, we do know that police can take it after the fact as long as you have photo evidence, so that's possibility. We're also looking at maybe improvements to height restrictors where they don't collapse like that, where they sort of. Essentially, you'd get into a shaming situation where they're stuck and can't get out, potentially you can come down and 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 catch the anybody who's done that, so. There are options we're exploring because it is it is frustrating, of course. Certainly, putting all that time and energy into a structure and having that happen in short order is not the not a good use of anybody's time or money.
Okay, thank you. I just have one question, you you've mentioned it was a farm vehicle, but. You didn't know who did it. I'm just wondering, how do you know it was a farm vehicle? And there are a number of farms just in the close vicinity, I'm just wondering if there's a canvas done or something to that effect?
Yeah, to Chairman Merlehan, there was a a spray bar left behind, so they did leave some pieces behind, which we'd, I was just assumed to be. Some form of farm equipment there, not sure where it was going or or that I don't believe that it would be local. I think they would all know better, is just looking for a shortcut likely, but. Unfortunately, we do have some eyes down at the bridge and they were unable to determine who who it was, but they did leave some some pieces behind for us to find.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on this topic or can we move move on or are there any other questions?
If anybody's missing a spray bar, they can. Township and.
No, with a credit card.
Yes, come pick it up.
Okay, we have. Outstanding activity list, does anybody have anything in there? I know. It's kind of shrunk over the last little while and nothing seems to have moved on it. But no concerns there. Next item is our notice of motion. I just have a statement to read before we get going on that. Before we begin, any discussion on this item tonight? I would like to remind everyone of the standards council approved for our meetings in the code of conduct and the procedural bylaw. Everyone must not use offensive words in language that is not inclusive. Or that discriminates on any protected ground under the Human Rights Code will not be tolerated. As chair, I will allow everyone to express their position as long as they uphold these standards. Please be mindful of your words and their impact on those who may be watching. I guess I'll. Start with introducing the motion, this is a motion that. I authored and sent out to council last week for your consideration tonight, just based on. Our meeting from our previous meeting and some information, misinformation and and language that was used in the community. The impact of of that on the wider community kind of led to. Trying to make something positive come out, started a conversation here that started with. A letter from the Mental Health Association talking about using inclusive symbols in our community. And 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 we know what happened and. What I would like to do with these motions is. Uh have a positive way forward so that the community knows where uh council stands on being an inclusive. Uh warming, welcoming, loving community that we say we are. We have to do more than just say it, though. We have to. Uh actually uh do what we say we want to be. So I'm just going to read the motion and then uh we'll open that up uh for discussion for. For the rest of council. Whereas correspondence from the Canadian Mental Health Association of Waterloo, Wellington petitioned Woolwich Council for a progress rainbow crosswalk. And whereas S two L G B T Q I plus people experience homophobia, transphobia, racism. Sexism, poverty, discrimination, all which contribute to higher risks of mental health issues for this population. And whereas welcoming symbols such as rainbow crosswalks in communities indicate safe. Welcoming spaces and belonging for the S two L G B T Q I plus individuals. And whereas recent discussion arising from the implementation of rainbow crosswalks in our community. Created unintended misinformation and hurtful discords. And whereas Woolwich Township Council identifies that there is greater need throughout our communities to understand. Two S L G B T Q I plus and all marginalized people and wish to create a welcoming community for everyone. Be a resolve that council will ensure that all future Woolwich Township councils and staff will have mandatory diversity, equity and inclusion training. Be a further resolve that council will direct staff to create a diversity, equity, inclusivity committee of council. Made up of politicians, staff and community members to promote initiatives that will lead to a more inclusive welcoming community. This committee will be formed within the first quarter of twenty twenty three. Be it further resolved that council reaffirm their commitment to installing rainbow crosswalk. Or walks or other inclusive symbols to coordinate with June Pride Month of twenty twenty three. Uh so that's the motion that uh council has had for uh uh more than about a week or so and uh. Going to open up the floor for any kind of discussion uh on this motion. Uh councillor McMillan.
Yeah, so just a procedural question. There isn't a motion before us yet. There's a notice of motion. Um so. Normally a notice of motion would would come at a uh a future agenda. After staff have had a chance to oftentimes bring a report to council regarding. The the motion. So I guess I'm wondering where we are in the process. I think we do have a bylaw. We discussed it tonight. A bylaw for discussing a notice of um of motion on this agenda. So I I'm unclear exactly about what the process is for. For a notice of motion, discussing a notice of motion and and where we are in that process. So just a procedural question.
Sure, uh clerk Smith.
Uh thank you, man. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry. Um so the the um description and the uh the uh bylaw amendment that we had in your agenda tonight. Uh regarding procedure was really just to clarify. Um what we had hoped was was kind of the understanding of council before. That if council provided a uh notice to the other members of council uh of a motion that uh they would like to bring forward. But then it could be discussed at the same meeting, similar to what we would have for um. Uh some of our correspondence on the agendas, staff reports and memos, uh everyone sort of reading it uh as long as it's in the full agenda package. Um if that wasn't council's understanding before uh and and uh council has concerns from a procedural point of view. We could always go to the uh suspending rules of procedure. Uh but I have no concerns if council wants to uh debate the motion tonight and um and uh either pass a resolution to support it or not.
I I I. If I may, Chair, I I don't have concerns. I'm just wondering. Before there's a debate, usually there has to be a motion that's. That's moved and then seconded. So that that is just my concern. I I do support. A lot of the spirit of what's in this motion. So if we're going to discuss it, I guess I I should then just discuss it. Is that what's?
You might as well start it off, go to it.
Okay, okay. I support a lot of a lot of the spirit of what's in this. Uh there's some things that I. Would like to modify. Um I would, I would like to see this. Um just like the crosswalk. Motion that was approved four to one uh by council to go to staff. I would like to see this go to staff as well. And the reason why. Is twofold. One is um. A council meeting is a public meeting that, yes, there's some controls and there's some structure to it. Um but it's not always a safe place. And I think that we've seen. Meetings across the region um from other councils, from our school board. Where things in council meetings have have become um unsafe for people. And going through the staff process is a safer process for people, frankly. Um so I think that the process that we're following with the rainbow crosswalk. We were requested to explore it. We referred it to staff. That gives staff the opportunity in a safe environment to connect with community members, impacted community members. Uh in a way that um is a is a in a way that they want to, that is accessible to them. And then come back to council. Uh the other reason why I want, I I would like this to go to staff first is because. In. In advocacy work, in allyship, there's a phrase that I I have learned recently that I really like that says. Nothing about us without us. And we haven't done the work to connect with impacted communities to allow them. To guide this process and um. By having our staff. By giving our staff direction to do that work, they can connect with impacted communities. They can allow those impacted communities to to give their voice and those impacted communities can guide the process. So I think to keep the environment safe for impacted communities and because. The nature of true allyship demands that you don't do anything about a community without a community. I think that this should go uh to staff, whether that's the regular notice of motion process where it's on a future agenda item. Allow staff to give us a report, whatever that is. And it doesn't have to just be staff. It it could be that that, you know, there's a um. There's, there's a. A meeting between staff and council and impacted communities, whatever it may be. Um you know, I think there's, there's a place for council to be involved in that. But I think keeping the environment safe and and allowing the impacted communities to guide the process, I think, is is why I. I think this should go through the regular notice of motion process rather than being tabled tonight. So I'm not going to table the motion tonight. I'm not going to move it, uh not because I disagree with the spirit of it, but for those reasons I mentioned.
Uh Mayor Shance.
Thank you. Uh thank you for your comments, councillor McMillan. Um I I agree with the intent of the motion. I've had many conversations, both verbal and via email with residents who hold a very wide range of views, as I'm sure you all have. I've also had conversations with members and associates of the two S L G B T Q I plus community. And have received cautions from them, similar to what councillor McMillan just expressed. My observations have been that many of us tend to paint and this, this is just me doing a bit of an editorial here, so please um. Uh permit me to do that. My observations have been that many of us tend to paint any other group with a single brush. When what we need to realize is that we are all individuals with all our wonderful differences. We all tend to fear, that we also tend to fear that by lifting up another person or group. We're somehow diminishing our own place. In reality, when we can lift someone up or a group that has been subjugated for whatever reason. We lift us all up and create a better community for everyone. Recognizing marginalized group does not negate the importance of anyone else. But simply recognizes that for too long, we have been a society with many divisions. And to work at that, we need to set aside our preconceived ideas and biases and get to know each other. We all, all of us, just want to be acknowledged and accepted for who we are. And so I I do have some concerns about some of the wording uh that is in here. And um wouldn't, wouldn't support the wording as it is. Um I would. Uh accept the first two whereas statements, but the third one I would um. Um just a minute. I've got two pieces here and I've got a very tiny screen that I'm working with, so um. I I I would say that the whereas about recent discussions arising is a divisive. Um sort of statement and I would change that. To read whereas recent discussions arising from the request for staff to prepare options related to the. CMA of Waterloo, Wellington letter have highlighted the need for community and council discussion and education. And I would um change the wording in the next whereas to. You know, with me once again as I flip back and forth here. Whereas Woolwich Township Council identifies a need throughout our communities to understand all marginalized people. And wish to create a welcoming community for everyone. I would then um. Say so that the be it resolved that council will ensure that all future township councils and staff will have mandatory diversity, equity and inclusion training. I don't have a problem with that. In fact, that is already in the works. Um be it further resolved that council will direct staff to create a diversity, equity, inclusivity committee of council. Made up of politicians, staff and community members to promote initiatives that will lead to a more inclusive welcoming community. This community, this committee will be formed within the first quarter of twenty twenty three. I think the intent of that. Um is is uh reasonable, but I would word it differently. Um be it further resolved that council will direct. Staff to create a diversity, diversity, equity and inclusion committee of council. Composed primarily of local members of marginalized communities. And and I would add led by uh local members of marginalized communities with staff support and political representation. Representation to promote um as it's written. And then finally, um the last, the last item has already been um directed of staff to to come back. If council wishes to affirm that in a in a motion. Uh again, that's fine, but it's already been direction to staff. So those are, those are my comments on it. It isn't moved and seconded. Um but if we go forward with it, those would be uh my comments for my support. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Uh uh councillor Redacom.
Oh, I would reiterate what councillor McMillan said about um directing staff to look at this. As we've understood in the last couple of weeks, is a very volatile issue. So I I would go through the notice of motion. Process because I think language is so important about inclusion and uh. And diversity that uh I I would be uh not inclined to move too quickly on this uh motion. Although I agree with much of what it is, uh is is in it, so.
Thank you. Uh anybody else? Uh councillor Shance.
Uh thank you. I I also agree with what uh councillor McMillan it's suggested. And I think the advantage of that is that if the staff, if staff comes back with a report on this, then it uh allows delegates to sign in. And maybe speak to it and speak in front of council so that we can hear their side as well, rather than making a decision for them. I'd like to. I like what councillor McMillan said, nothing about us without us. And I think that would offer that um. To uh to happen if we uh if we allowed it to come back as a report and then uh allow delegates to speak on the report.
Okay, thank you. Uh Mayor Shance.
Thank you. Sorry to to jump in again. Um but just further to that, I think um. I think we've all seen the the divisions in our community on this issue and I I agree that um. Proceeding carefully to keep everyone in the process safe is of um. Of utmost concern to me and to uh creating an atmosphere where we can learn to talk together and not. To uh not to fight each other about it.
Okay. Um so I'm not seeing any kind of uh motion uh that anybody wants to table. I just have a few comments um. You know, regarding if you just take a look at uh the views on our YouTube channel from the last meeting. Well over forty two hundred views. Most of our other council meetings ranged from thirteen to, you know, a hundred and twenty. Views for a meeting and and this was well over forty two hundred. Um. That is pretty broadcast, pretty far and wide, and that doesn't even include uh the coverage that went across Canada. Uh showing. Uh what Woolwich Township is not about. Um so my my one, my one issue with putting this back to staff. Is this is purely a political decision and we're making staff make that political decision. Uh for us uh in a time when a breach has occurred. Um such as the one that we had. Uh we need to, we need to show some leadership at this point. And uh and and show the community that we are looking to make steps forward. Um those are just my opinions on the matter at this point. Um but if there is no motion. Uh nobody's ready to move the motion, then there isn't anything to talk about at this point. Uh Mayor Shance.
I feel I need to say this is not about headlines and this is not about across the country. This is about here in Woolwich and this is about us keeping our people safe. Safe to say what they need to say and that might not be in a public process. That might be in a process as councillor McMillan outlined um with our staff. That might be a safer place for them. So honestly, I if, you know, it it's not about headlines. It's about community.
You're absolutely right, Mayor Shance. This is not about headlines. Not at all. This is about people in our community. That heard words that re-traumatized them. You're out of order, ma'am.
And you're not. And you're not to debate.
You're out of order. Councillor McMillan.
Forty two hundred views on a YouTube channel is exactly why. We should be doing this in a way other than. Putting this on the floor tonight and voting on it. It's that attention that guarantees that it's not a safe space. And you're talking about re-traumatizing people. That's what we need to prioritize is not re-traumatizing people. And with a hot button issue like this, that gets four thousand times the normal number of views. We need to, we need to prioritize the safety of impacted groups. Not not rushing through so that we can say that we accomplish something politically. We need to prioritize the impacted group.
Okay, thank you, councillor McMillan. Councillor Shance.
Thank you. I just want to, I thank councillor McMillan for saying that because that's exactly what I was thinking. And there's that many people that got involved. We have to walk slowly and make sure we get it right.
Okay, um so the the final thing on on this is we're asking for training for staff. A committee of council. a committee of council, and just to reaffirm the commitment that we already made. But we can talk and table about this at uh our next meeting. Uh, we are going to move on to the next item, which is an adjournment. Uh, council would, oh, so a motion to adjourn. Councillor Martin. Councillor Redacop, all those in favor? And that's carried. Council would like to thank all who participated or tuned into the meeting tonight on our YouTube livestream. I remind council to stay connected until we receive confirmation that the livestream has stopped. Good night to everyone.